Have a meeting that was just all.
You're right.
One thing better than that is a meeting with all the people outside, of course.
Okay, so Kelly kind of lead, because you can probably see this names on the screen better than I think. Okay, so I didn't go through the. Well.
Susan.
You, okay, Todd Hamilton.
Have to respond to this, which button is it?
Sorry, Todd Hamilton, Forester, what is the Forester?
I'm actually talking to my forest biologist, the Forest Service for the zone for all of them.
Good morning, everyone. This is Sarah Akerich, District Ranger for National Archives.
I don't know whether to talk here or there. I know, good, good morning, Jennifer Motta, Field Manager, Reading, BLM.
You'll never excuse me being so spoken, but I appreciate the compliment. Tara Jones, District Ranger for the TRMU and SFMU.
Okay, Pat Ross with facilitation team. Jerry Cousins, the lab director. And I am Kelly Sheen, District Manager, Trinity County Resource Conservation Director, and part of the collaborative facilitation team. I will call, roll through the rest of the Zoom attendees, Joseph and Susan Bauer.
Here.
Carol Paul.
Here.
Okay, Larry Glass.
Yeah, I'm here, just so you know, Tara and, and anyway, some of you are very clear. Kelly, you sound like you're at the bottom of a well.
Okay, I have a microphone, does that matter? Does that any better?
A little clearer, but you know.
Okay, thank you. Bob Morris.
Here.
Chris Cole.
Here.
John Nager, US Forest Service.
Here. Here.
Everybody keep bouncing around. Malik Ray, Forest Service.
Here.
Arnold Whitbridge.
Here.
Randy Paris, Watershed Center.
Yes, good morning.
All right. Taylor Barrett, Forest Service. Let's see her here, but I'm not hearing her. Bear microphone. And I think that. Is everybody currently on the call?
Kelly.
Ken. Okay. And me. You have a ball mic?
Kelly, just to let you know, Kelly McElroy will be joining us later since she has another meeting. She'll be representing the, at the, the forest at the forest level.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, well, welcome, everybody. So we haven't really done the hybrid event thing, so bear with me as I try to do this and keep track of. Hands going up in the room and hands going up on the screen. So agenda check, is there any changes to the agenda requested? Even though I did, Tara, I didn't specifically call it out, I know that you're part of the, kind of talk about the. Park Ranch to. I am on the Corral.
Yeah, that's, that's it.
So anybody, anything will help me, any changes, suggestions for the agenda? No? Okay. Public input, so this is an opportunity for people who are not active collaborative members, or members of the agencies that are involved, to. Give us some comments if there's anybody that would like to do that, or is anybody like that even on the call? I don't know, let's see. Oh, okay, great, I have a interest. Well, so. So we have Diane Richards just joined us, right Diane?
Yes, San Franza.
Great, okay, great, welcome.
Sorry, sorry, we're late, apologies.
That's okay, Trinity County, 10 minutes isn't that long.
Yeah, we're from, we're from Hayfork, it, it could be 20 minutes or hours.
Okay, okay, good. So first thing up on the agenda is one that Sarah Akerich asked to have on the agenda. Back earlier in the summer, we had a field trip that went and looked at the camps project, which is a four or three fuel reductions on harvest, some non-harvest areas. And Todd kind of led us through that in the field, and they wanted to give us an update on the fact that we have the pathologists here. Would lend me to believe that we're going to talk about fungi and that sort of thing. Never a good sign. We, I have an entomology partner, we're known as Bugs and Crabs. So Sarah, kind of, you kind of take, take the lead and make sure the mic, people can, you know, get you on the. Mic.
Yeah, is this a place for?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think people can see Todd, so maybe.
Well, let's do that.
Todd will make the question.
They forgot to stand in the middle or whatever.
So the intent today, can you all online convert if you can hear me, okay? I see a nod, so that's a good time.
So just got a quick pause, something that I forgot about from the early part of the. The agenda, or is there anybody representing somebody as a proxy?
I believe I might be representing the Watershed Center since Nick won't be able to make it today.
Yeah, well, that, that's not really a proxy, you're it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so no proxy, so, okay, sorry about that, Sarah, go ahead.
Oh, got it. I'm still getting my head on script with the hybrid setup here, so this works. So this is, as Pat alluded to, a direct follow-up of our field trip and some discussion of. Heterobacillus and potential mitigations for that that we had out of the field that Todd Hamilton led. So we've got Ashley Hawkins, our Zone Forest biologist in, and then Mr. Hamilton in the room. He's a little bit off screen, but he may be coming on to add to this discussion. So that I will pass it to Ashley Hawkins. And we've got about a 15-minute kind of presentation to share, and then you're thinking about 15 minutes for discussion and Q and A.
Okay, go for it.
Yes, I'll just kind of give everybody the background about. Some of the questions I had perhaps in mind, or the group had, and some of the. Field-going activities we've done since then. In the original proposal, we had mentioned breeding the stumps of recently cut trees with some kind of halprider registered for a compound. As a preventative measure for the specific root disease called heterobacillus. For, there's two different varieties, so the heterobacillus. And it was brought to our attention that perhaps we don't have a habitat type or the soil type to secede the preventative measures, because perhaps we don't even have that root disease in the area. So we went and looked at a database and found, you know, one occurrence, we suspect that was possibly before the campgrounds were developed. So folks were looking around and spotted it in Bonrose Pine, but again, that was like 1960s, mid or late part of the 60s. So we went and looked, and we looked at three of the most used campgrounds. We looked at Hayward Flat, Alpine View, and Tanner Dolch. We bounced off in every single site, but specifically what we found, I'd like to leave up to Ashley Hawkins to describe in greater detail. And so that thing, what we found is worthy of discussion and to bring to your attention, and Ashley, if you're okay with that, please elaborate.
Yeah, so the heterobacillus, as Todd mentioned, it has been found in the area outside of the campgrounds, and it's found, actually been found. More than once, once fairly close to one of the campgrounds, so it's already in the area, it's also been found all around Trinity, like inward, in the general forest. So it's been reported, and it may, some of the reports were inspired back as 1960, but this is a fungus. That sets up shop in the forest and doesn't go away, it doesn't die out, as long as there are trees available, as long as there are suitable posts. It will persist in forests, this is a disease known as a disease of the site. Once you get it on that site, you can't get rid of it. So it's out there. Luckily, when we went and visited the campgrounds, we didn't find it in any of the campgrounds, which is great. Because this, this package, this disease, has the potential to kill trees fairly rapidly, leaving standing dead trees or hazard trees. And, and increase fuels, et cetera. So they have, this disease has the potential to. To negatively affect the campground in terms of generating dead trees, and in some campgrounds, some campgrounds are especially closed because of the number of dead trees and. The lack of shade and the increased number of hazards and potential for. Life-threatening incidents to happen with tree falls. So we don't have this disease in any campgrounds, as far as we can tell. And we would like to keep it that way. So the way to do that, the, the tried and true way to keep heterobacillus out of an area is when you cut stumps. You treat the stump surfaces immediately with borax, with borax and borate substance. That creates a physical barrier where the spores of the fungus land on the borax cannot, and, and can't colonize the stump itself. If we don't treat the stumps, that the fungus will, the spore will land on the stump. Did it eat into the root system and spread from root to root to adjacent healthy trees and kill the trees that way. So this package initially is introduced via spores, and then once in the forest moves via roots to adjacent trees. So by applying borate substance, you're short-circuiting its life cycle, preventing it from ever getting into a forest in the first place. And you can think of this, this is a physical barrier, so much like you treat that outside of your house. So that you don't get, so you don't actually get decay in your house. You treat your deck so that you don't get the decay and weathering of your deck, and you treat your fence, right? We, we treat, you know, we're, we're all familiar with doing this at our houses to protect our wooden structures that we, you know, we live in and live around. This is very much the same thing, we're protecting the stumps so that the rest of the trees and the campgrounds are not effectively killed. And we lose the value of those trees, and potentially people get hurt, and this happens fairly frequently with hazard trees in campgrounds. And that is a major, a major effort that the Forest Service constantly works against to keep these campgrounds safe, right? When you enter into a campground, and you make the assumption that the Forest Service is keeping you safe, right? This is one of the efforts, to keep people safe. So.
My just got some great.
Yeah, the rate of spread is depending on the level of stumps. It doesn't spread at ground level, it doesn't, oh yeah, that's another thing, thank you for asking that, it's a great question. This is a fungus that interacts with the soil, this is a fungus that means root-to-root, so it is, it resides in the root system. It does not enter into the soil for more than you, you know, like, less than an inch between roots maybe. Now, sometimes it'll, it'll span a little bit of soil between individual roots. But in any forest, there are roots that are intertwined under the ground, so it really goes from tissue, pre-tissue, pre-tissue. So this is, this is, it's habitat, it's 100% inside of wood. So maybe before we go back to Todd, are there any other questions at this point for Ashley about just. The presence, lack of presence of the fungus and. The, the general concept of the treatment?
Yeah, I have a few questions. First of all, what's common name, what, what species, the, 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 is it a root disease? Does it need to kill the roots or does it get up in the hole?
So, okay, so it's common name is, the, the, the sort of common name is anosis. Because the species name usually heterobacillus anosis. The species can't name change, so many people still call it anosis, and we can, we can, you can call it that, and that's, I think, the most familiar name. Currently, it's being called heterobacillus root disease, that's the, that's the genus name, so. We have, in this area, we have two different species that affect different trees. This one we have around Treey Lake is the one that affects pine. So this is primarily, this, this won't move from pine to the viper or vipers. So it's pine to pine, and it is a root disease. It alters, it, it can be into the hole, but really, the way it kills trees is it girdles the root, the root collar. So by the time it decays the roots, and when it gets up to the root collar, it's decaying the root collar and killing the tree in the root. So that's how it is, but it does, you know, it, it, it will then continue to grow up the tree and, and to continue to decay the tree. So not only does it kill the tree, but also post-mortem, it continues to degrade the structural integrity of the tree. And increase the probability of that tree falling.
And so when you treat the stumps, are you just treating newly cut stumps or any, any stumps?
Newly cut stumps, so the fungus, the spores of the fungus, which are, are surprisingly common. If you go do spore grafting, if you go put a piece of, a piece of material out there, take it back in the lab and look for the spores, you'll find them every time. Especially since we have it in the exhibit with surrounding forest. So the spores land immediately on the stump, and so you treat the stump within 24 hours of the most time in effect. And only pine stumps? Every stump, because this fungus, even though it doesn't, it doesn't kill Douglas fir or other tree under species, a stump is a stump to it. It only infects living pine. It can't affect living Douglas fir, it can go and enter into the root system via any stump. Okay, so, okay, anybody else, any other questions at this point?
I've just got a.
This, it's, so the name of the disease is heterobacillus root disease or anosis. The name of the fungus is heterobacillus oxidentale. Or, or sorry, sorry, it's heterobacillus regular, because it's that, I mean, that's a different species, that is the first species, so. And I can provide. The cell, but Tara, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, having, having dealt with anosis a little bit on the. The logging side of things, it doesn't, it doesn't kill the tree like, the tree turns brown and you can tell the tree is dead and compromised. The tree is green, but it's rotting out on the inside, so the structural integrity of the tree is shot, and it's really, you can't always tell from the outside when you're looking at it. Which is, there were times I've run into it where in campgrounds on the, on the last. And that, that was, we ran into some anosis there, but it's, I think that's probably the, the most concerning part for me. It's not like the tree turns brown, you know, oh, that tree's dead, it's a threat, it's actually losing its structural integrity from the inside and you, you just can't see it. So it still looks like a green tree, that wouldn't necessarily catch your eye.
Yeah, great point, that's. So there are a couple of chat questions. Uh, mother, just the nameless, okay, if you can provide us with some information. Yeah.
So, we're losing, as you've seen, we're losing a lot of Douglas fir and, and pine as well. Is this disease weaken the tree, make it more susceptible to the bark?
Absolutely. It takes like many fungicides, and what Tara mentioned, it takes a while for the tree to actually die. And meanwhile, it's losing vigor and it's getting stressed by the fungus, so it does, oftentimes, the fungus can absolutely kill the tree itself. But as we all know, many weakened trees aren't, aren't susceptible to bark issues, and so yes, it does interact with bark issues in that way. Okay, nobody has anything else back to Todd?
Yeah, so what we were proposing, there's, you know, Forest Service Handbook, as well as Forest Service Manual Direction, to help mitigate this potential issue. What we are finding is that it's, it's tied to the discretion, to some extent, of, of a line officer. And, and it would be prudent, I think, and wise to perhaps evaluate what is the risk? Of not treating versus, and what is the risk of treating? And so when you look at the NSDS, which is kind of the fact sheet that goes with any chemical that may be applied in the environment. It's, has certain signs, right? So danger would be a pretty bad sign, so highly toxic level. Whereas, you know, the, the sign that we have, or this one's coffee because it has an iron, just like hand soap, for example, you don't want to put in your eye. So when, when you look at the health and evaluation sheets, and there's another 150-page document that. Is evaluating everything from aquatics to the human environment. You're, you're really talking about next to nothing, right? We're, we're talking about soap in the forest, the 12-wheel pain, or eight-stuff in put-your laundry. So is that risk being applied directly to a given service of a recently cut stump? Is the risk of us putting it on there to what we think, or what we know is to the human environment or the natural environment? Is that risk greater putting that on to our stump than it is to not, and then potentially have trees that are standing green that could, could fall over in a heavy wind with campers underneath it? That's the hard part I have, that's just a forester, not the sort of line officer, and so. We're looking at ways of, is it really do everything as we proposed and stay with it? Is it do nothing as they could give, proposed as well, or is there somewhere in the middle that we can actually find? So we were originally proposing to breed stumps down to a, a three-inch diameter, and that's. You know, our forest, you can have a thousand trees per acre of that size, we really need to be applying that compound to every single一棵 stump. Probably not, right? And 10 inches is kind of that, sorry, 14 inches is that driver of the, the natural, so of a traditional timbered cellar within a forest for, for health benefits. Now, that, that goes up because risk of a tree falling into general woods had a lower probability of, of causing human harm. Whereas in a, a developed recreation area or rec site, you know, the probability of failure, of failure causing human harm would be rather high. So. But wanted to let you guys know, we're listening to you. I'm constantly learning about all these, the call biology that's in our forests, and so we went and took a look, we ended up finding the presence of it in the general area. And in learning that it's not necessarily based on. Soil texture, whether it's sandy soil or, you know, molten soil like clay, it's really a tissue-to-tissue thing. And then it doesn't seem, no matter what species you are, you can still count and locate that, that was a highlight for me. And so that's kind of where I was coming back, hopefully coming back to you guys, to go, is there a number that isn't arbitrary? But there's a number that we can kind of agree on to, that we can still possibly apply this compound to these stumps. To prevent the spread of a disease that once we have, we cannot get rid of. And that, that's the thing, once we got it, you have it. Right now, we don't, I like to keep it that way. And the, the proposal we're, we're looking to do is, best I can tell, all the science literature they're looking at. Is, is fairly well-known, right? If not completely. It's extremely effective, but little risk to the human and the natural environment. And I'm certainly more willing to provide the literature that looks at the range of biology and the effects this might have on it. How it is supposed to be applied. And. And any additional information you guys might want to have, but the number one thing was the. I'm just the midway forward here, right? So I need a pathologist to really describe this, or I'm probably just going to confuse everybody. But that general picture of, we said 14 in the general woods, three in the campgrounds. Maybe we're not doing that, what is, what is that? Where we can, if it's agreed that maybe it's important, or that it is important. What is that number that folks are not necessarily comfortable with? As far as feelings, but where that line is drawn. By the numbers that we see from the science that we've done, is it that six inches, that, that eight inches, right, that probability of failure, what number would that be? I don't know if I have a good number right now, we still have, looking at some of the. Real intense science that looks at this, because right now, unless we can tell, see numbers of three, that three end was fairly arbitrary, like. Let's get 100% possibility of not going to have any infection until they went there. Well, that's not really practical, perhaps, we did it recently in the Hurst Campground and. Trying to follow and get every one of those stumps was, you have to be right behind the contract, or you're going to miss. So the practicality alone was difficult, get all the way down to three. But when it's dealing with the infection and preventing the spread, I'm looking at, you know, possibly higher number as long as we can still acquire. Don't want trees falling over on people. And we have a lot of standing dead trees right now, right? We, we were all saved, I just don't want to add to it.
I could address any discussions here. Since can copper pollution use in trees? I don't know, but copper is a bit more toxic.
What? And what? Can you say it again?
So, so somebody said, can copper pollution be used in trees? No, the copper is a fungicide in agricultural settings, but that is not effective for, as a physical barrier. To heterobacillus, and copper is more toxic than borax to the environment, to all organisms, much more toxic. So that would be a disaster.
So Todd, I would also, just for gee whiz, and, and I know most of the concern in Trinity County around this issue revolves around water. So I would say that the label itself prohibits us from applying. The material within a certain distance of any water, so if like, we're not going to be applying this stuff right next to the creek, that, that's written right on the label. Just wanted to, because I know that's one of the primary concerns over here is, is that relationship between the, the substance and water. So we would definitely back it off of the creek per the label instructions.
Yeah, the label, if I recall, will say about 20B.
I think it's at least 25.
Yeah, and what we go a little bit more than that.
Yeah.
There's a question from Carol. Carol, you have a question?
Well, I was just gonna say, I posted the Forest Service PDF on the use of this in chat, you know, which is interesting to read, you know, on. It was published in 2020 for Pacific Southwest Forest Service. So, anyway, that, that's interesting. I, I personally, you know, there are forms of borax that are Omni-approved. So they're organic, they're considered organic mostly for fertilizers. So, you know, and as a master gardener, we used to tell people, if you're trying to, you know. Get rid of ants and stuff, use borax. So I, I personally don't see a big issue with the use of. Borax to treat the stumps, so, because it is so close to being, you know, an organic compound. That's my two cents.
Okay, thank you. So we had Karen and Jared.
So I often wrote an EIR for cow fires vegetation treatment program. It covered 31 million acres in California, and one of the. Chemicals that we analyzed was sporax or borax for. Treatment, what I'd like to talk about. So if anyone wants any information, I mean, he did a detailed analysis. If anyone wants any information on it, I can forward that section of the. The EIR.
Okay, anybody else? It's just Jared, oh Jared.
Just being very cautious, asking the collaborator for what diameter of stump to apply to this, and I guess one is to say, well, how many names and dead cameras are worth it? Kind of a piddle, cars.
Very much so, yeah.
I think we're trying to get, it's sort of a two-part thing, trying to get all the best information we can for collaborative about the disease and about potential treatment. And then like, the next step of that is acknowledging that our policy says three inches, but we're going to do some additional looking to figure out what you know, what that diameter.
Again, being very decisions. You know, we had social lessons from the collective.
So I have a question. So I mean, this is a project to do, you know, cutting trees down, but the same campgrounds that had hazard trees cut down before, right? And 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 there's not been an incident of of finding fungus in a campground from those other tree falling efforts. So does that kind of play into your your thought process?
Yeah, I mean, just because it's not a hundred percent guarantee that when you, though there's stuff out there that it's necessarily going to be infected. There, but there's a probability associated with that. And the probability is higher when you have herbicide on around in the forest, which which we do. So it's not, it's not a hundred percent. So, yeah, you can get lucky. You know, to cut trees down and not get it. Also, the disease does take a while to develop. This isn't overnight. So there, it may be there. And it just hasn't been noticed yet. So that's the thing. And for trees to die from this disease, some disease the fungus is down, so the disease starts to develop, the fungus moves out into the trees, and it takes many years. And then it takes many years for those trees to die and then move into the next set of treatment. So this is a very, a very long route. We're looking into the, I mean, we're we're in proactive.
The other thing I think to consider is, and correct me if I'm wrong. But, you know, the the usually the hazard trees are are dead, so the roots aren't doing anything. So if you get a spore on there, it's not going to get sucked up and down into the root system and go do the all the bad things. So typically, if we have dead, dead trees that are kind of, they're shut down and not doing anything anyway, there's a we don't necessarily have to to treat some of those, so.
So, yeah, that's 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 a better answer than what I said. Is there a, is there a bug brown, isn't there a bug brown fruity bunny? Yes, it's a root root disease. Yep, so how does it spore? That's a great answer, Karen. Yeah, and it does produce fruit bodies in the stumps usually. Because it's too dry in an external environment. So on the coast, you can find the smog is on the outside of trees, cough. Anywhere. This is inside the stump. So it happens to some degrades and start to cain in, and there's spores get out, are liberated from the stump that way.
Okay. So Sarah, anything else on this? I mean, kind of just update, more information, kind of decision making time?
No, we're, we just, we're clearing out where we are in the process. We're still pre-sloping. So we wanted to get you guys information and try and answer questions before putting our proposed action forward or comment, just to operate with full transparency and give you guys the best available information that we have.
So, great. And I would say maybe Todd actually would appreciate getting the the analysis from the PDEIR, you know, to throw into their thought process.
I just want to make sure that folks understood. And I don't want to miss one, but we have a field meeting and and even some of like these Zoom type meetings. And I want to make sure I'm capturing some of the the not issues but concerns. You know, one, we talked about the Bowerman boat launch area as kind of being a safe, we have to treat that a little different than we were just about. We're still looking at them on that. Personal field opportunities for some of the smaller members, so making sure that's accessible for for the locals. We're still planning on doing that. Making sure we don't pop the top off so heavy that the understory starts to regenerate in a way that's, you know, unmanageable, right? We're sort of looking into that. But also, the the one herbicide didn't think we were really kind of on the same page. And I don't want it to go and propose something that's going to be a surprise. And so at least having this discussion, even though we don't come up with a solid number per se. But if this shows up in the spoken document within the proposed action, and it's still present, I want it, I don't want it to be a surprise until we do have it expunged. I want to make sure that we're all kind of having that dialogue, that it would seem reasonable to either have it or not have it based on expressions.
Okay, great. Thanks. That was great. One more question. Kenneth?
So with a prescribed burn in an area that has this disease eliminated, like if there were burning stumps that had a spore in it?
No, I mean, if you are on a burn that all in your forest was news, so we're not talking about prescribed burn. Where the fire actually gets down into the root system and destroys the root system. Then you can have a sanitation effect by the fire. But a prescribed burn isn't burning the roots. You have to eliminate the roots. Or if it's one of your vacuum, this is impossible.
It seems, yeah, it seems to me one of the things you got to work through is the kind of operational practicality of what you want to do. I mean, you're saying they got stuff that has to be treated within twenty-four hours of being cut. You know, and there's a lot of trees.
Who says?
It seems like.
Well, that's why there are any economics.
It's actually contractually, it's four hours. And then unless there's a rain event, and then it's twenty-four hours. So when it's when it's in a contract, it's a contract, we we get it treated like it it's twice a day, the soaker goes out and takes care of it.
Yeah, because the closer you get to the generation, that's something better, more effective. Okay, great. Thanks. Actually, Todd, Sarah, thanks for letting us have a conversation. Okay, next up, updates from BLM.
We're ahead of schedule by five minutes. Killing it. I've got notice. I don't have anything as exciting to talk about as fungus and soap, however. So, yeah, just a few things. So we're in kind of the midst of our resource management plan stuff. I know you guys have been hearing me talk about that for a while, but we have spent the last three weeks focused on draft alternatives development. So the next kind of milestone for us is to get an alternatives table out to our cooperating agencies, hopefully by the end of the month. And then have some review time and then hopefully look to get started on the draft. EIS, including those alternatives. So if you've been attempting to get a hold of any members of my staff and they haven't been responsive, it's because I've had them sequestered in Zoom calls for three weeks. So, yeah, so we, I think, are pretty much still on schedule with the RMP, but as it has come to light that review at the headquarters level is taking longer, I expect that our proposed schedule will lengthen as we move through reviews. I think Laura met with the recreation subgroup and talked a little bit about the campground fees and work we're proposing for Steiner Flat. So we'll continue to work on that, but we're working on some upgrades in the Steiner Flat Campground, or right now it's a not a not a fee campground, but with the goal of making that eventually a fee camp campground. So continuing to work on that NEPA document. And then just busy with a few other things. I'm still working with TPUD and WAPA on the RAP project. Kind of working through some issues with visual resource management right now. Specifically, so and some biology issues. So continuing to work on that, that includes the Forest Service as well. And then digital two ninety-nine, so the fiber optic line that runs along two ninety-nine from well, it actually starts not on two ninety-nine and cotton wind goes all the way to the coast. That project still exists and is kind of churning out there. It's a little farther along, so we're waiting on SHIPPO, kind of stuck in SHIPPO consultation currently on cultural issues. Not not maybe, issues is not the right word, cultural bureaucracy. So there are no cultural issues. It's just the bureaucracy of getting through the SHIPPO process. Maybe I should back that up. And then really just, I think, some personnel changes. I'm not sure because I didn't come to the last meeting if Alden covered those, but in our fire program. So Rob Winkler, our Redding FMO is actually taken a new job. He'll be staying in Redding, but he'll be the Assistant District FMO. So a loss for our field office, but again, I guess for the district, so he doesn't get to go too far. So we'll be looking to fill behind him with an FMO and then Garrett Dunn, who was our fuels module leader for the last few years is now over in the mid mid ed position. So those of you who knew Jeremy Straight, Garrett now has that role. So you should see Garrett in like Fire Safety Council meetings and and, you know, kind of more in that role than in his fuels module leader. So a couple of vacancies in the fire program that will be crossing our fingers, we can fill with qualified candidates. So I think that's it. The next round of bill funding requests, we just got some information on that this week. Looks like for us, it's going to be focused on restoration type projects. We have a due date, I think, the end of October to get some requests in for bill funding. So infrastructure bill. So, but just busy as everybody is.
Any questions or comments for Jennifer?
I just have one question. Do you know when the the planned burn is for the Indian Creek?
I do not. I mean, it'll depend on our rain. Yes. So I don't know. Rob's actually on fire assignment due back Sunday. So I'm assuming he's still he's getting to do both jobs.
That that never happens.
No. We've flown a detail behind him, but I don't know that they've made a selection. I actually don't even know they had any applicants. So he's still kind of walking both lines, so. But we'll let you know as soon as we have a plan.
Chris Cole, what's your name?
Yeah, I just just wanted to say, I had I'd spoken with Rob relatively recently about the burning and reading Indian. And the the intention was to get to that this fall, just as as the window is going on, so.
Great, thanks. Okay, great.
So make it rain.
Yeah.
Sunday, right? Say Sunday.
Okay, anybody else, anything? Jennifer, I, one last thing I didn't mention was that earlier this summer, we had BLM Network Director came to visit, we were going to do a grand tour, I guess, of California.
Just, yeah, so, well, actually, the only place she came was, well, Redding, Arcata, and then she hit one stop on Ukiah. So that was the only, not really sure why she chose to come to Redding in July, August, but like, you know, wow. Right? Yeah, wait till it's super hot. Yeah, so.
It's a dry heat.
Sure. Yeah, and then we actually have the state leadership team. So all of the field managers for California BLM and the overhead, they'll be back in Redding in November. I'm not sure what we're doing yet for a field tour. Possible the discussion was to go actually out to Lewiston and we have like a little staff ride on the Loudon Fire since we're you know, being asked to step up prescribed burning. And so we kind of thought that maybe collectively as a field manager group, it might be good to have a discussion about lessons learned as we have some newer field managers in the state who haven't maybe done a lot of prescribed fire. Yeah, Karen will be back for that.
Great. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, on the Forest Service and field trip recap and discussions, let's start with Tara and then and the Chasten Trinity side, and then we'll go to Six Word.
Okay. All right. So we'll we'll start with Pilot. That's what you have on your agenda is. So I was thrilled. We we had a pre-marking trip out to the Pilot project to look and make sure we all had some agreement on what the prescription would look like and what the marks should look like. And we had, we had members of the collaborative fuel break groups. We had, I, you know, we had some administration. I was there. That's what I am now, I guess, as a minister, though I got to paint some trees, so I enjoyed that. They, I could have done that all day. Yeah, thank you. It's a good day. And then we also had our foresters, our marking crew, and then we had our partner, partners were out there in with the watershed center. And we all kind of took the time to talk about the prescription, look at different ways to apply it. And then and then we, that was a great day. Then we split up and we got to work marking it. And then then had the folks come back out and take a look at what we had marked. And and see what they what they thought about it. So I'd like to kick it over actually to you, you know, some of the people that were on the pre-trip being Larry and and I think Bob's on there and then some of the people that were on the, and Jerry, people that were on the follow-up trip. So I overall, I think it's every time we go to the woods, it is so much better than looking at something in the office or on the computer because you just you, you, it's so much easier to reach agreement to talk about the trees that could go either way. So it is an excellent field trip, but I'd like to kick it over to the collaborative and and get their feedback on on what they thought and if it worked for them and if that's a something to do moving forward.
Okay, anybody want to start off?
I will. The the pre-marking trip was very helpful. Thank you, Tara. Getting to engage with the people actually doing the job, answering their questions and them also being so interested in learning what we were talking about and what what our goal and objective was. I'm sure made the job easier for them. Once, once they got the gist of what we were talking about. And they got that through asking us, you know, thirty, forty questions onsite. Looking at this tree, looking at that tree, and it was very helpful. And in my opinion, yes, Tara, that is the template for how to move forward with projects. Get out there early. Get your whatever crew is going to be working on the job. All on the same page with with all of us. And I think you're going to have a successful project then. I wasn't there for the second day. I'd kick it over to Bob to describe what happened then.
Go ahead, Bob.
So, everything Larry said about the first trip, I concur with completely. The second trip, it was heartening to see that they had, the marking crew had asked a ton of pertinent questions and then you could tell that they got it. It was, you can always find a tree that you would have done differently or two, but for the most part, they definitely seemed to be with the program. And once again, as Larry said, it's going to help make for a much more successful project than had we not been in the field. So thank you for that.
Okay. So I wasn't on that field trip, but I did I did work on that whole project and a number of the units that I looked at had residual old growth. It had been harvested, slightly harvested in the past, and they had a component of residual old growth. And we had talked one time about trying to get some volume off of these commercial volume to offset some of the costs. And there had been a discussion about whether those residual old growth trees, which were generally pretty scattered, would be available for harvesting. So did that come up at all in the field trip? And what was the resolution of that?
Well, I'll take a stab at it and then I'll let Bob and Larry kind of weigh in. We we really just focused on creating a shade of fuel break that would be there for the long term. So we picked up the trees that were going to be the healthiest, provide canopy for the longest period of time. Sometimes that was the 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 one of the larger trees, the dominant tree would stay. Most of the time the dominant tree would stay, but if the dominant tree, some of the pine up there was really, it had stopped growing, it was getting short needled, you could tell it had some health issues. And it wasn't going to be on the landscape very long. So the group and the the marking crew and the and the contractor, we all, we all looked at those together and and looked at some of those. And on this last trip, Tom Walls was there and 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 we agreed that those trees weren't weren't long for this world. Especially with the drought and they were already showing some indicators. So some of those came out. We just really focused on that long-term shaded fuel break. And and that and then just took out the trees that weren't going to be contributing to that. Does that, is that a good assessment, Bob or Larry or?
I think it's a good assessment, specifically your question, that conversation about residual.
Well, what you were talking about, that's what I saw in pretty much everywhere was there was already a good shade canopy in mid-story. In mid-story, but what actually was the over story other than these uh residual uh. Conkers, a lot of which were declining and bigger. And as you said, it, they look like they were on their way out. Many places. So I'm glad you were, you were looking at that.
Yeah, I see.
Larry, Bob?
Yeah, I I I would say that the way that we're applying the prescription. Somewhat takes into account what Ken's talking about, but we didn't focus on. On that. We focused on the long-term viability of the trees.
Okay, so what, anything else on the, so so what what what's next with the pilot project?
I expect it to be done, me and Mark, in the next two weeks. And then we'll turn around and we'll get out and get it cruised. Um, and I expect it to go out um in a timber sale contract. Um, the first quarter of twenty-three, so should be, should be early, early first quarter, so it should be October. Um, so that's where we are. We're working on the cruise design. We'll do a D by spacing in the plantations. Um, and uh Larry, you and I still have to go out and and go to the back of the plantation to make sure we're on the same page with what that's gonna look like. Uh, but um, and Joseph was on the field trips too. I didn't mean to leave you out, Joseph. Um, so and and Arnold was on one of them as well. So it was, it was a fun time in the woods. You guys missed out if you weren't there. Uh, but it's on, it's on a good trajectory. Um, I, and I, uh, like I told the group in the woods. The last thing I want to do is have NEPA that's completed and not move it into implementation. So um, I thought, you know, what's the worst thing that can happen is you have NEPA sitting there and then you get a fire and you didn't implement it. It's like, well. Duh. So, you know, we're working on getting that out for a quarter of twenty-three.
Right. Any, any questions for Tara on the pilot project? Uh, Bob?
Yeah, Tara, I don't know the numbers offhand. I think it's really informative. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I think it's really informative to say the number, total acres in the project. And the number of total acres that are merchantable within the project. Do you have those ballpark?
I wanna say uh it's pretty, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, and if I guessed, I'd get it wrong. So it's only about um a couple, gosh, only like a couple hundred acres that's merchantable. Um, it's not, not a lot that had, was gonna be commercial. Um, but. But it is what it is. So we'll, 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 that will be a little bit of a threading the needle, trying to come up with a commercial offering that will. Draw some attention and and get a bid. So I'll have to make sure I package it and there'll be some, you know, strategy around how to package that. Uh, to get the, get the values, then we can turn around and reinvest the value in doing the non-commercial material. Just to make sure everyone, that's kind of the way the finances around a timber sale work is we leverage the the value to get more work done on the landscape.
Joseph, you have anything to add? You're, you're muted.
You could press the space bar and talk.
Arnold's got all the tricks down. I didn't even know that.
I didn't know that.
In in Joseph's, in Joseph's world, he needs Susan to come in and.
Kelly's got him. Kelly's got him. No.
No. Oh, well, Susan, get back. Joseph, if you hold the, you uh, hold the space bar down, it turns, it turns to my arm. While it's being held there. Space bar is that long thing on the computer, uh, the keyboard plus a series.
I'm with Joseph. What technology?
So while Joseph's doing that, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So my recollection, well, over the years, you said the pilot project was about coming up with a template. That then it would result in future projects, one every year. That would go through NEPA using that same template, you know, so that we can start doing kind of, I think, the term cookie cutter would be used. Kind of project by project. So what's next?
That's a really good question. And we actually talked about this a little bit in the woods. I think what was, I always get this one wrong and I, I end up kinda laughing. It was a, it was a hundred miles or.
A year.
Yeah, cuz I always say it feels like it's more than one year and ten, one mile and ten years. But uh. So what I'm doing right now is in the bigger, the bigger landscape um projects that we're looking at, that that burnt ranch corral high, high pump thing. Uh, the giant thing, we're looking at applying uh the shaded fuel break principles and concepts along the the main roads. Um, as as we also treat the forest health issues that are, you know, further away from the roads. And that, as we talked about in the woods, the the benefit of that is uh Fish and Wildlife Service then has to look at the whole. Treatment, not just be hyper-focused on on the little skinny strip along the road. We also talked about the the new fuel break um CE authority we have. That allows us to go up to three thousand acres and a thousand feet wide. And we talked about that a little bit on the next field trip we'll get to. So. Um, I plan on incorporating this approach into the larger projects. And also using it um, it with the CE authority uh, uh, on some of the the quicker turnaround projects. Um, that, that's kind of where I'm at.
So just a detail on that, when incorporating, incorporating it into a larger project, will the larger project force stall? Moving along the corridor rather than this sort of corridor. Being made it slower and slower down, right?
It'll be slower up front, but faster on the back end. So if um. You know, by by doing all the collaboration that we're going to do on these, on these larger projects. Then let's say that we do, uh, we do an EA that's twenty-five thousand acres. Well, now we can go and treat that twenty-five thousand acres and the roads in there and apply the fuel break strategy. And I can, out of that twenty-five thousand acres, we can, once that NEPA signed, then in the first year, we can do a two thousand acre project. And year two, we can do the next, you know, the next two to three thousand acres. So we can, we'll have all that NEPA coverage, so then implement. Instead of, you know, a a hundred miles uh or, or in this case, it took, we won't use pilot as an example because. But instead of taking a year to maybe do a couple of hundred acres or even six months to do a couple hundred acres, we'll be able to get. Hit that, that bigger picture. So I think by doing both, Jerry, I can get more, more roadside shaded fuel breaks implemented. Across the, yeah. So I'll use both the CE authority and the the big EA, the, yeah, well.
So Joseph, then Larry.
Well, I just wanted to say that I'm encouraged with the, both the uh enthusiasm of the leadership and the people working in the field. Sounds like uh, you know, everyone is fired up to get the job done right, and that's very encouraging.
Great, thank you, Joseph. Larry, then Carol.
So I wanted to chime in because I, I I don't want to get this to get lost in the shuffle. So Tara inherited the pilot project after it's been through several ranger configurations. And somewhere along the way, they played musical chairs with the units. And so that's why you've wound up with this Frankenstein kind of project that doesn't pave its way through the woods. Cuz that is not how we originally designed the project. So I just wanna be clear on that. And I think with Tara at the helm, you're gonna be able to pick uh sites to treat. They'll pay their way out of the woods instead of being uh like the pilot project, unfortunately.
Great, thank you, Larry. Carol?
So I just wanted to ask Tara, so with the Bowerman Ridge project, they're gonna be treating private land along Highway Three. And would you be able to use the pilot project prescription to kind of um. Connect those Forest Service pieces along Highway Three, where we're talking about doing a. A big roadside fuel break along Highway Three, nor, in the North County?
So uh you, I I vapor locked on, we're going to be treating private ground. Um, so I know we're doing the Bowerman project out there with the watershed center and I know uh, and we're working through that. And we're not sure which uh, I'm not sure yet if we've landed on whether it's gonna be uh a CE or which CE or whether it's gonna need to be an EA. But um, the, with the, exactly the approach you're talking about. And then um. I am still, so the first big project I have in mind is that burnt ranch corral. Thing over there, the giant thing over there. And then the next one is that, that whole Highway Three corridor and uh Sarah and I have already talked about it. Because you know, it would be, it would not only be the TRMU pieces, but we'd have NRA um to to deal with. Um, and then all the way up to uh, uh Scott Mountain. So uh, and I, and I'm. And talk conversations with the climate about it as well. So it, along the main roads, yes, Carol, to answer your question, I think what we're getting to is. Along the main roads, yes, we'd be looking to do a shaded fuel break. And then obviously, in some of those critical wildlife habitats, we would have a more wildlife um. Centric prescription, which would still get us a a lot of uh good fuels treatment and diversity and structure and 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 reduce.
I'm just mostly, so if you have the pilot project prescription. Does that help you then expedite, you know, coming up with the shaded fuel break along Highway Three? Can you use that prescription? I guess that's my question.
Yes, but I guess the question would be, do we think that treating a total of three hundred feet along Highway Three is going to be sufficient to get us where we need to be? Um, and we've run into probably the same problems with Fish and Wildlife Service because it would be so, such a limited thing and they're only allowed to look at the very footprint that you're looking at. So yes, it's going to help me because it's gonna give me an idea, a starting point with this group. And the first thing I would go back to this group and say, okay. If we were to do this pro- project today, would you, would your prescription look exactly the same? Would we, would we make it wider? Would we tie into roads? Would we? Do some things to allow for prescribed fire? So it gives me a great starting point. And and so I'm already one step ahead of the. Of where I would be, I'm not starting flat-footed into the next project, Carol, if that, if that answers your question.
Well, I guess my question is more, I'm I'm more concerned about immediate, uh, you know, as soon as feasible kind of. Work along Highway Three because of the evacuation issues. So three hundred feet is fine, especially because. Some of that's gonna be handled in the Bowerman Ridge project, hopefully, and some might be handled with the PUD. Cuz their power lines run along the road in some places. And then, you know, then that would give us time to look at the bigger picture, the landscape. Kind of um treatments that need to be done long-term. I'm, I'm just mostly concerned about the road right now.
No, I, I, I understand that. And that, so there's, and those are things that we'll, we'll talk about um as we, as we go through. We talked about when we get snowed out and we can't do a um, a field trip, then we'll do some of those uh. Kind of a program of work discussions and and get around maps and sit in conference rooms and talk about. The best way to strategize to to get work done the quickest. So I, I understand what you're saying. Um, there just, just note there's some trade-offs with that that. Um, make things a bit more complicated, uh, especially with Fish and Wildlife Service, at least from what we just learned going through the pilot exercise.
Well, I know Larry will correct me, but you know, my understanding was that the, you know, the original. Vision behind the pilot project was to be able to come up with a prescription. That would accelerate and speed up the ability to do roadside fuel breaks. And around plantations and then go back and um look at the landscape issues. Kind of, once we had that kind of rolling along. So.
That's my memory.
Yeah, that's what I thought we were doing.
But I'm hearing you incorporating that into the wider landscape.
Sorry, we can't hear you, Jerry.
A question with one stop the other.
Yeah, so the question that Larry did ask me, Carol, is if I do a larger landscape project, what's that going to do to these uh roadside fuel breaks? And and my answer has been that it, I'm with the two teams that we're working on getting to, two planning teams, I'll be able to dedicate one. To the large-scale EA and one to using the CE authority, probably the fuel break CE uh CE authority along. Different roads, ridges, uh, ridges, power lines um and roads. So certainly, there's opportunity to do the Highway Three corridor. Um, on on its own. Uh, and we, and we can talk about the pros and cons of of taking that approach and and what makes the most sense.
Okay.
Well, I think that, you know, the North Lake would like to see. That Highway Three project. I mean, that was, that's what I'm hearing. And so um. Uh, since capacity has always been an issue and since that we don't have the two teams in place, I'm just gonna keep saying um. Please prioritize the roadside fuel breaks cuz that's what the North Lake seems to want. And then I'll shut up.
Carol, to your point with regard to the private and the stretch between um, suddenly Covington Mill and Chisop.
I can't hear you. Sorry, Kelly, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, better.
Okay, so to touch back on the private, the question that you had about a private section of Highway Three that goes between Covington Mill and. Uh, Chisop, Preacher Meadow that is tied in with the current Bowerman Ridge project. That stretch was the stretch that we submitted uh with the Kona Kona Foundation uh with Cal OES and EMA funding. And that project is coming along, but it's not a commercial. My understanding is that it has no commercial on it. So it doesn't follow the pilot prescription and it's much, much. Much wider than that, like it's. Um, you know, like a quarter of a mile on either side of the highway along that stretch. Uh, essentially straight fuel reduction of various, at different distances uh with various prescriptions. Uh, Chris Cole, do you wanna talk to that for a moment?
Um, yeah, I could speak a little bit to it. The uh, yeah, a lot of it, that that's between, yeah, Guy Covington and Trinity Center, a lot of it, SPI. And so I think the intention was to do, I believe it was six hundred feet each side of the road. And a lot of that is mastication ground, so the work should go pretty quick once it's, once it's in place, but the. It's still not finalized, but it's all, it's all moving forward. So I think that would be a, a super good piece. Uh, I think the Forest Service could then build off of that and that would. That would get it going to to connect the dots. So that the private side's coming pretty far and it's, it sounds like the. The Forest Service is also planning on some of the, some of their ground, but it would be a good connecting piece, you know, match the width. And then uh, build off of that.
And and we heard recently from our contact at the Kona Kona Foundation that that's. Uh, every indication that that will be, that funding will be coming um to the two, about ten million dollars. Larry?
Yeah, I just wanna encourage Tara uh to, to, if you're going to put your second team on landscape work. That landscape work should be immediately adjacent to population centers and not way off in the middle of nowhere.
No, you're, you're absolutely right. And and um, but you know, Carol, the one thing I didn't mention is so that burnt ranch area is in uh the number thirty-seven ranked. Fire shed nationally, whereas uh Weaverville is in the, and that uh portion of, moving up north is in the uh fifty-seventh. Uh, nationally ranked fire shed. And with a, you know, the sad thing is I could go around to every community in Trinity County and they're all just off the chart and it's super. Um, I don't know if it's depressing or overwhelming or both, but um, I've gotta start somewhere. And everyone, if I go to every community, they, they want me to start there. And so I'm, I'm trying to use the CWPP. The, the fire shed rankings uh to to try to, and and working with this group to try and set those priorities for what that's gonna be. And Larry, you're exactly right. And that is exactly the direction we've received from the forest supervisor is our priorities are protecting communities. So yeah, I, I agree wholeheartedly with that. Thank you.
Do those rankings kind of dictate where you have to do your work?
They feed into that decision, I think, and as well as, you know, it's community protection. So one of the things we have is the fire shed rankings. Now eventually, there's the opportunity that funding may be tied to some of those fire shed rankings, which will help us get some of that fuels work done. So part of being able to receive money is having NEPA that's complete. So I'm really trying to focus on the CWPP, the fire shed rankings. And and using that and working with you guys to figure out where those community priorities are. But it's, like I said, if I go to Hayfork, it's, it's something over there. If I go to Lewiston, it's over there. If I, you know, everybody, and and there, no one's wrong. That's the, that's the sad part. Everyone is right.
My understanding is that those fire shed rankings were done prior to the last two fire season. And I guess my question is. With as much of the, of like that particular fire shed having been impacted by the Hollywood fire. How does that affect the ranking, eh? And how does it impact like the potential for the projects within that area? Because they know that all of that stuff. Um, when Joe Smale was talking about, you know, doing corral bottom and all that, that, that was. Prior to all the, the fire impacts that we. That was prior to all the, the fire impacts that we were experiencing there. So is that playing into? Have you guys looked at that? Is that something that should impact where you go in there?
Um, yes and no. So Monument is, was weird. It was a, a giant fire, but it had more mixed severity than any of the other fires. Um, whereas McFarland had a giant area of high severity, river, same thing. Monument had little patches of high severity, but it had a lot of mixed severity. So in the short term, we might be good for the next, I don't know, Todd, three to five years. Maybe we've had like a basically a. But it will be right back in the same boat. Um, so it's not, I would say the, the ranking isn't the deciding factor by any means. Um, but it's just something to consider along with the C W P P and, um, working with the, with our partners in the collaborative. So. And along those lines, Carol, also working with the R C D to, to look at doing a field break in the Weaverville Community Forest. We're working with the Watershed Center to do the, um, field break on, uh, Bowerman. So we're not a, we're, we're using our partners to increase our capacity while we're still trying to do. Also increase our capacity in, in-house.
My last work weekends.
So we, we're done. We solved it. Okay, I think we're, are we ready to move on to the Weaverville Community Forest field trip?
Yes.
Uh, okay, that was, uh, we ended up going to Weaverville Community Forest on the field trip because we were smoked out of, uh, going down to burnt ranch. So, um. We went down, went up to the Weaverville Community Forest, looked at some of the harvesting that has been done on Browns through the various phases and through the years. Um, had, had just a, a, a great day, great field trip. Um. We looked at, uh, the recent, we looked at the firewood decks, which by the way, for those of you that. Um, live in the community, we, those firewood decks, the, all the signs should have been pulled by now. They're open for firewood cutting. It's a lot of, lot of like, uh. Three to eight inch material that's decked and available for wood cutters with a permit. Um, and we got that on the Facebook page that that, those were available to, to cut on. So, um, if, um. Kelly, if Amelia wants to put that out on your site, that'd be great. Um, so that, that was a, a good win. It looks good. Um, had a, had a good day out there learning from, uh, the collaborative, what they were looking at and listening to what they were thinking. That's what it, yeah, I mostly wanted to, to, I, it's just finally, that part is done. I have a little bit of homework to do. Uh, working with, uh, Kelly and Bob and, uh, also Kelly McGellar, to look at the, the cable units that we had originally proposed and see what kind of shape those are in. See if, uh, we can maintain some of the canopy, uh, issues while still putting the, the corridors that would be needed for that. Um. Uh, am I forgetting anything for anyone that was on the Weaverville Community Forest?
Talk a little bit about the idea of producing that C E for the shady fuel break on Musser Ridge.
Yep. So, um, towards the end of the field trip, we, we looked at, uh, using the new C E category, um, to go up to a thousand foot wide on a field break. And putting a, putting a field break in along Musser Ridge. I know some of that. Uh, brush and things will be covered under the Weaverville Community Forest Phase Two N I P A. So that'll be good. But using that C E and working with R C D, working with our collaborative fuel break group and the steering committee to, um. To really take full advantage of that C E authority and, and, you know, along, have a field break along Musser Ridge and then probably have some more acres that we could, we could do some additional work.
So turn it over to people that were on the trip, if anybody has anything they want to add. Bob and Joseph were there. Uh, Kelly.
Joseph raises.
Joseph, go ahead.
Well, I, I really think, uh, given the emphasis on wooies that, that. The, uh, leading from Musser Ridge down toward the town, that's a prime place to. Prioritize for treatment. And there's, uh. Enough, uh, there to get some value out of some of that. Because up the road, it's brush fields that are going to need money to treat, but. That seems like under the new C E category. Why it should be a priority to get that done. It's right on the edge of town. Really seems like a no brainer that we need to move on that one.
Okay, thank you, Joseph. Bob, you have anything?
Uh, I'm having a lot of trouble with audio and stuff today. Sorry. Um. It was a great field trip. Uh, it was good for folks to see the Browns phase three finished up, what that looks like and, uh. Visiting Browns phase one that we hadn't even seen in a decade was quite enlightening. And I think Tara's on the right track with all this stuff. And yes, Musser Ridge is a great, uh, wooey project.
Okay. Kelly, anything on that?
I would just say that it, you know, especially with Musser, it won, um, you know, it'd be followed up in several rack treatments that have been applied in, in that area that would. Make it a little more contiguous and I think it'd be a solid project. We look forward to working on it.
Yeah.
Okay. The last thing I have for that, Pat, is where I've got Tim putting together a map. Tim, actually putting together a map to show where our treatments are so that we can be strategic with B L M. The steering committee, the R C D and, and that, uh, collaborative, uh, cooperative fuel break group we have as well to. To make sure that, because there's so many different chunks of ground in there, just making sure that we're, we're being strategic and we're connecting the dots where it makes sense.
The last thing I would add is at the very beginning of the trip, we were actually up off of two ninety nine towards, uh, Oregon. The mountain and we talked about, uh. An informational kiosk.
Yep.
Uh, that might, you know, be something similar to what? The, uh, Six River, Mad River Ranger did, got funded through the rack. Uh, earlier this year, you know, to, to talk about fire and fire behavior and. And, and that sort of thing that, and, you know, because from there you can see, you know, the recurring fire that just keeps going over the same route. There, you know, every few years. But so I, I think if we get, get calibrating some fire into it, you know, that would be a great project. So I, I was not on the field trip, but I've been driving around cutting firewood for the last week and, um, thanks for the gap. But the forest looks great. And it's really nice. I'm kind of curious, what was the conversation like? To determine, I mean, was there a conversation to determine canopy color? Because I thought that the overshoring looked great, uh, shading, uh, shading brown.
So yes, we had a really good conversation with that. And I probably, I'll defer and let Bob take the lead, um, about the, the canopy closure. On the, on that field trip.
Bob, you're, you're.
I know, I know. I'm going between the phone and. So it was a tremendous aha moment for me that kind of covers all huge issue in the community forest. And we came to pretty much consensus years ago at a seventy percent number. Seeing that. The first unit that the Forest Service cut that we ended up scientifically measuring at fifty-two or fifty-four percent. I expected to go back and see terrible brush field there and. That wasn't the case, uh, partially because of aspect, but partially because it's been burned, treated afterwards. But, uh. Anyway, it's going to affect our. At least my recommendations for prescription going forward. And in the B L M proposed Oregon sale, uh, we came up with consensus for. Scoping on that where. Aspect affects canopy closure. In other words, northeast, northwest, north can be opened up a little more, therefore sixty percent. South, southeast, southwest, more sunlight, more brush response, keep it at seventy percent. And we seem to have real solid consensus on that. So that's a. Actually a pretty huge movement from where we've been in the past. It might not sound like much, but it's, it's a big difference. Did that answer your question, Tara?
Yeah, I was, uh, Jerry had asked about if we, if we had that conversation.
Yeah, I thought it was great. Uh, and you're seeing how the forest board develops to that much, uh, coverage.
Yeah. And, and, you know, the, the, Carol, Carol, you got your hand up?
Yeah, I just had a quick question for Tara. Um, we saw the Facebook post about the decks available for firewood and, um. That people could get their firewood permit. So the question is, um. If somebody gets their firewood permit, are they, is that for personal use only or can they sell that?
That's for, it's a personal use fuel would permit.
Okay. Yeah, because people are thinking they can go. Get it and sell it. And I'm thinking, I don't think that's right. So, okay, perfect. Thank you.
There's a lot of, lot of Facebook traffic after you notice your posting.
Yeah, there's a bunch.
Sick law enforcement on, on that, uh, to answer that question.
I mean, there's a bunch of stuff like. Yeah, no, people are like, well, can I have it delivered? And how much does it cost? And there's all these.
I was going to say, I want some brought to my house, but. You gotta go out and just, it's not even, you didn't have to split it. It's only about this big. It's like, perfect.
Break the pile down a little bit so people don't scamp for so high to start cutting.
I think, were they too, were they too high, Jerry? Because I, we, what was the height of them? I, I, we kept them less than ten feet for, so if we think the people are going to be cutting, you try to keep them less than ten feet. Okay, that's good to know.
And they're pretty old, so.
I'm clumsy, so it doesn't.
And, and a chainsaw and you got a rock.
Right, yeah.
Well, it seems like your Facebook post might be a great place for your law enforcement officers to. Start with some meet and greets.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Educational.
I think that's the end of, of, of the three of the rounds one. A kind of general forest service update. We've had Six River sitting quiet. Oh, Kelly, oh, I do. Welcome, Kelly. So, uh.
Hello.
Oh, can I add a question about? If it is related to the things we've just talked about, if it's something broader than that, we're going to get to other stuff. Oh, okay. I'll, I'll answer the note.
Good question.
Forest Service update, okay. But we've been letting. Fast Trinity dominate the discussion. So we've got La John, I think. Representing Mad River. So just general update when John were mad or Six Rivers.
Morning, everyone. Uh, I got back just in time. Um, let's see. So update. A couple of things going on. We recently, you. Probably saw an email went out a while ago, maybe saw the publication. The Mad River August Complex Restoration Project is in the objection period at this point. We have, uh. Put out for advertisement, uh, the Acre Woods, uh. Timber sale. That's going to, we're. Projecting that it's going to sell by the end of the fiscal year. Uh, that project should produce about six thousand seven hundred or six thousand and a hundred, uh, million board feet. We've been working with T C R C D recently to do a lot of brushing along numerous roads throughout the district. Uh, that is going to continue. They've also assisted with some road repairs. Uh, we have. Multiple fuel reduction projects that are ongoing with the assistance of the Watershed Center and T C R C D. So the D seventy shaded fuel break. An expansion project. Uh, we have about seventy acres, uh, done on that. The Van Duzen Vegetation Management Project, we're at about fifty acres of fuels reduction. Mad Ridge Fuel Break, we are at about a hundred acres of fuel reduction. We've been doing, running the air curtain burner. Uh, pretty much consistently where we burned about two thousand tons of, uh. Biomass at this point and continuing. Uh, that's going to get moved next week over to another portion of, of the brief forks. Uh, uh, timber sale area. Uh, but that's going to continue to burn as, as long as we can. I may have missed one or two things. I, I'm unaware, but, uh. Moving forward for planning. We're starting to get into, uh, Rat Tail. Which is a project that initially started back in twenty twenty, uh, but that got interrupted along with so many other things. Uh, so we're looking to resume that project. It should produce another timber sale looking in fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, and then additionally. In conjunction with, uh, Tara Jones and the West Side of Shasta T, we're going to be starting that South Fork Mountain Joint Fuel Break. So it's been a little bit slow at the gate. We, uh. Watershed Center did some drone, uh, flights to collect some, some data. On a portion of it, uh, we're going to have a meeting with them next week, Friday, to kind of have them. Walk us through that data and start to, to really get our, a grasp of what the project area is going to be. It's expanded from the original concept. After the, the August complex fire, uh, originally it was going to be south of the thirty-six down to approximately Cedar Gap. Now it's, uh, extending north from the thirty-six close to, uh, somewhere south of the two ninety-nine. So. Uh, we're still trying to get the, uh. Our heads wrapped around exactly how large that project's going to be. But that's going to start to, uh, pick up steam here in, in the next couple of weeks as well. Uh, that's all I've got at the moment. Any, any questions on any of that?
Any questions for La John?
Yep.
Okay, Bob?
Um, two questions on Acre Wood. Is a green timber sale or a black timber sale, number one?
Uh, there's a little echo going. I don't know if that's just me, but, uh, I think you said, is that a green timber sale? Yes, that's a green timber sale. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Bob. Hope you're muted now.
Six thousand one hundred board feet. Is that what I heard?
I think.
Million board feet.
It's six point one. Yeah, so.
Yes.
I'm sorry, once more?
Somebody.
It should be. He, he just got a unit of measure. So it should, based on the number he said, it should be six point one million board feet.
That makes much more sense. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Derek.
If you have something.
Was there another question? I can't hear.
I don't see any other questions. I'm trying to read faces.
So, I have one that you can throw here. Uh, one of the benefits that Nancy talked about the air burn was all the, the char that was being generated in the bottom. These tanks fuel, is that being harvested? Is that being used anywhere?
Uh, could somebody help me with that question? That, that, there was char, uh, from the, the air curtain burner?
Yeah, the ash.
The ash real concentrated, uh, when we did a field trip quite a while ago. Nancy talked about that, that it was very beneficial for soil and gardening. And horticulture. And I was wondering if that's being utilized.
Uh, I'm unaware if it is, is being utilized. I can ask Nancy and get back to you on that, uh, but. Uh, they haven't, uh, informed me how they're using any of that byproduct.
Okay. Okay, any, anything else for La John?
Organic.
So one project you didn't mention that I'll just mention in case anybody's interested is. I believe that, uh, Jim Dees, your recreation guy, has a, uh, trash pickup. Cleanup kind of project on Reef Lake coming up on September twenty-fourth.
Correct. Thanks. Uh, yeah. So for National Public Lands Day, uh, uh. Jim Dees is a new hire here, uh, for our rec department. It's the first, uh, person we've had in that position in quite a long time. He has led the way to put together a Ruth Lake, uh, truck, get the trash out the splash project. So our forest supervisor or acting forest supervisor, Carrie Otto is coming over to, uh, to visit us for the day. Um. We're getting some pretty good publicity out there. I think there's going to be a couple of radio talk shows, uh, where Jim's going to feature on there, uh, coming up in the next week. Uh, we don't know what the attendance will look like, but we're excited to start to put together a, uh, an annual event. Uh, related to that National Public Lands Day. So if you know of anybody that's in the area that's interested, the twenty-fourth. Uh, related to that National Public Lands Day. So if you know of anybody that's in the area that's interested, the twenty-fourth. Uh, we're gonna have some, uh, some food available. We'll just spend a couple hours, uh, going out into multiple areas around the lake. And doing some cleanup, coming back and, uh, really just having a time, getting to know one another from the community.
Cool, great, thanks, La John. Carol.
Thank you.
John, did you have, um, what's the status on the, uh, your lightning complex? I was, are, is that a done deal? Is that wrapped up or? I know it's not in your district, so I don't know if you're gonna know that.
Uh, I've, uh, been seeing emails, the daily emails, it's. Close to a hundred percent containment from my understanding, and there hasn't, uh, it's been. Holding steady at something around the forty thousand acres, um. I can pull, give me a minute, I'll pull up the, the latest, uh, email and give you the best update in the, uh, in the chat box.
Thanks, La John, sorry to spring that on you.
No, no worries, thanks.
Okay, while he's looking that up, we'll move to the Shasta Trinity and we have Kelly representing the. Forest Supervisor's Office, Sarah with. Repre- NRA and Tara with the West Side, so you guys can do rock, paper, scissors, whatever.
Funny, because we have a staring contest and every meeting we're in together about who's gonna go first, so I think we'll agree Kelly should go first.
You know. Vetoed. Um, I, I think Tara and Sarah could go first and I'll fill in any, any gaps that I hear. How's that?
Fair enough.
That's right.
Okay, I'm gonna go, um. Well, we had, on Saturday, we had, um, our cleanup event, um, going out Weaver Bali, Weaver Bali Road, um, for Lands Day. We've kind of separated, uh, three Saturday, three, I think, one, yeah, one for the West Side, so three Saturdays, uh, for Lands. National Lands Day and, um, picked up trash up Weaver Bali Road as well as Musher Hill Road. Um, and, uh, I know we pulled up, uh, Gash Street pickups and a trailer, um, Rachel. Rachel came over and picked up trash, it was the first for me, I've never seen a forest supervisor do that before, so that was fun. Um, it was a good day, uh, I got to, got to meet a few people in the community. And, uh, uh, it was, it was just a good day, nice to see people put some, some time and sweat into just cleaning up the forest, and it's nice. Too bad we have to do it on a Saturday because it's, you know, definitely needed to be done. So we're working on that, we're still working on, uh, some planning efforts, uh. It, around McFarland and some, uh, fine tuning some things with Fish and Wildlife Service, that, that's been taking longer than we had anticipated. Uh, also working on, um, the Weaverville Community Forest Phase Two, I'm still hoping to get that out by the end of the fiscal year. It might be just after, um, because McFarland has been taking a little bit longer, but we'll definitely have that signed, uh, prior to going into, uh, any kind of. Uh, fall burning window, so that, that'll be a big deal for us. Um, and then starting to look at what, what we wanna take on for monuments, um, uh, one of my foresters, Logan, has a meeting with, uh, Nick. Goulette to go look at the, uh, uh, Big Springs area, um, and the Barker Mountain area. We did have some high intensity off of Monument up in, up in that neck of the woods, so they're gonna look at that together, figure out what we wanna do there. Um, been working with Kelly on the preliminary, uh. Uh, plans for a field break in Weaverville Community Forest as well as looking to, um, broaden our agreement to include planning. Um, also looking at, uh, probably some of the big news is we're looking at entering into a good neighbor agreement with Trinity County. Um, and so I'm drafting that in my spare time. Um, but that's, that's gonna be a really big tool for us, there's so many, uh, so many county roads. That, uh, go in and out of national forest and, and having a good neighbor agreement will, will give us a lot more tools in our toolbox. Uh, so we're, we're looking into that, um, we're actually, it should start logging on River Complex. Late this week or early next week, um, so that'll be good, and we're putting together a contract for the non-commercial material. To address those, the, the non-commercial material as well, that'll have to go through our contracting. We are working with grants and agreements, um. I'm, I finally just reached out to the staff this week and to get an idea of the number of agreements that we're trying to, to manage, and it's a lot. Um, it's been slow coming through grants and agreements, um. It seems like if we, if we rattle the right door at the right time, they seem to move. So, uh, I appreciate our partners that have been reaching out and, and letting us know when they're re, reaching some of those critical deadlines. Um, that's kind of the, the agreements have been taking a lot of our time, uh, hiring, been successful in hiring, um, a, a GS nine. Uh, civic culture person, we got another forester on board, um, we've, uh, landed a GS nine in recreation. Um, see, I'm in the process of hiring two, uh, well, we're gonna hire three for the forest, three GS eleven archaeologists. Which will really help, uh, across the board, help the Chester and he get some things done, so that, that's gonna be a big benefit. And we're still in the process of the rec hiring event, um, we've hired a few at the, the nine and eleven, uh, levels. But we haven't gotten down to kind of those GS six, um, seven, five, six, seven permanent positions, so I'm really looking forward to that. Um, we've officially got Monique on board with the forest as our partnership, um, coordinator, so that finally all the pieces fell in place. And that's, uh, a done deal. That's probably what I can think of off the top of my head, and then starting to work on some of that, uh, very left side, very front end collaboration. Um, and plan that next field trip, um, which we can get into later if you want. Um, I think that's it, I feel like that's it, it should be it.
Okay, so, Sarah.
All right, so I'll pick up on the hiring thread and go from there. Along with Tara, the NRA has been doing a lot of focus effort on hiring. Some of it through the mass hiring events, some of it through single vacancy announcements. So we've had, I would consider it partial success with our national hiring. We were able to pick up, um, one recreation person from the rec hire so far, and then. Uh, one forester from the National Forest through hiring event. Those are both still working through the process, but they are remaining on board yet, but they're, uh, underway in the system. For those of you who did not know, for the NRA, our forestry shop, we have a shop of one, and that's Mr. Hamilton. So we were really excited to be getting some, some more people and just help the force multiplier for Todd. And his overall program vision. Um, let me see, uh, also very much excited about the GS eleven archaeologist's position being flown across the forest. That's gonna give benefits to the NRA as well, um, we have not historically had that level of capacity. Our district people, we have one GS nine individual. So, uh, again, another just force multiplier in our ability to get work analyzed through our team and done timely. Um, I think that's the hiring stuff. I thought it might be germane to touch briefly on Minersville for the whole group, can you just provide a balance?
Sure.
All right, okay. So, um, we're, we're the critical piece, the critical step for Minersville. For us to be able to report of that project is the thirty percent engineering design. Um, and cost estimate, so that's what all of our efforts have been focused on pushing on, because until we know. What we're gonna do with a reasonable degree of certainty for that reasonable is a thirty percent engineering design. Uh, we can't start permitting, we can't, we need the, um, and that, that, that's what we need to get us closer to your construction. We also then will be able to find out, you know, how, for, for that cost estimate piece. How close are we on the grant that we already have to being able to construct this program and the improvements out of Minersville? Or do we need to go for something else? Okay, so that's, that's what we need, uh, the forest service about our customer proposals this. May, this late spring, uh, we received one bid, oh, are we on Zoom? Oh, no, we're not, okay. So we received one bid, that bid came in very high. And some of that we think is an artifact of trying to use a more streamlined hiring or up hiring. The streamlined contracting process that only went to a limited pool within the pool. Um, and those individuals were also all architecture and engineering firms. So the cost estimate that we got from them for, for their bid reflects paying for engine, for architecture. As well as engineering, because that's the kind of firm that they are. We really just need an engineering firm to give us an engineering by a cost estimate and don't need. Pay for an architect, uh, just to pay more for the same thing. So, uh, we had a meeting with the Department of Forest and Waterways in the state of California. Uh, they were a hundred percent in agreement that that cost estimate was too high for what we were really gonna do at Minersville. So the plan is to go back out for bids for the design process maybe work in October, when our new fiscal year opens up. And to go out to bid from, uh, uh, the full array of engineering firms in the open market that can. Uh, apply for this contract, um. So that's where we are at with it, the, if, if there are no unforeseen circumstances. I replace a large wildfire as an unforeseen circumstance, um, then I think we can get. A contract awarded in January, that is my understanding of, of the timeline. And then from there, we'll be looking at late spring in terms of actually having a design. And that is, that is the optimistic, nothing bad happens timeline, so that's probably our best case scenario. Just with the profit that stands, and then if other things happen, timeline changes from there. But that's the, the best status that I can give you all.
Yeah, I see La John has, uh, typed a response about the biochar.
Yeah, uh, La John had to hop off, um, uh, first off, he had, um. They were regarding the fire, or sorry, the lightning complex, um, for Six Rivers, uh, four, one thousand five hundred forty acres. Wednesday, uh, then fourteen, uh, six hundred twenty-five personnel found by the fire. Uh, and then he said, according to Nancy, the biochar in the air curtain burner is the stockpile of the root station. It is unfiltered at the moment, but if folks in the community are, are interested in picking some up. They are welcome to come by and pick it up, otherwise the plan is to use it for some part of the station. Um, that was that.
Good, okay.
Have you ever seen a pile like I have? Have you guys ever seen, is it like ash or is it like biochar?
Pretty dense.
It is. Like your nails are really, like.
Almost like melted, you know, it's.
Like coal, okay.
You know, Sarah, I'm not surprised you're getting out of ladies' business, and I think there's so much work out there. Contract with just putting out big numbers and be taking, taking if not well.
So, anything else?
Oh, I had a question for Sarah, I was just wondering, um. You probably don't know this, but can we find out if Trinity Valley Consulting Engineers in Weaverville, they're a civil engineering firm. Locally in Weaverville, if they're on the list of potential, um, people who would be able to submit a quote?
Uh, yeah, I'll be right down that name.
So, so it's Trinity Valley Consulting Engineers, TVCE. In Weaverville, and they've actually been looking for work, they, they did our fire station and stuff, they're, they're really good, so, um, anyway. Might help if they're local to, you know, have us lower costs.
Okay, thank you, Carol. Um, okay, so. Hey, Arnold.
Sorry, my, uh, my internet blinked off for a few minutes, I think it was mostly during La John. But I, I'm sorry if, if this question has been addressed, but. We've been hearing from, um, Fish and Wildlife Service, Christine Jordan, that, um, their office is pretty thin. She's pretty stretched, um, things might slow down. Have, on the Shasta T, have we noticed, or do we predict any slowdown of projects or planning? Be, uh, because of difficulties consulting with Fish and Wildlife Service?
Uh, I think we decided at this end, the forest service said Kelly will cover that one, Kelly, back for one.
I'm sure, so, uh, we do meet with Fish and Wildlife Service pretty, pretty frequently to talk about their program. Um, and how it, and prioritizing it, um, both with the Shasta Trinity and the Klamath projects. Um, at this point, we have not seen, um, them. Uh, significantly slowing down our, our processes, but we are getting to what seems to be a bottleneck. Um, with, with projects coming in, just in the, the timing of, of submittals, um, across, you know. Cause the same, the same office covers, um, us, the, the east side of the forest. And the, and the whole Klamath National Forest, um, they are also on board for. Um, or currently working with the region or the Hazard Tree EA, um, that, that is covering the. The, uh, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one wildfires, uh, up here. That, uh, the, the roadside and admin sites that are, were affected by those fires. So far, they've been doing a pretty good job with juggling, um, and, and well. We, we constantly are, are working on those prioritizations, at this time, we're prioritizing our. Um, post-fire work, which includes McFarland, um, for, for consultation. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, I, I don't know whether to be wor- worried or not, but so far it's working, I guess, is, is the message.
Uh, so, so far it's working, so far that they are, um, uh, meeting their, you know, thirty day. Um, timeframes and getting feedback back to us within a couple of weeks, so, um. The, the same timelines that we've been working with them through as part of our, as part of our MOU.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, Kelly, other, other kind of forest updates that you might have from the SO side of things?
Um, Tara, I didn't hear you mention the, that we entered into a stewardship agreement with the, with the Watershed Center. Um, that, that does cover the whole Trinity side of the forest, so that's, that's exciting, that's one of the. The last of our, our agreements to, to go through, I know it's got signatures, I'm not sure if it's fully executed yet. But it is, um, close to being on board if it's not already, so we're, we're excited about that. The, the work itself is primarily focused in the, uh, August and Monument footprints, however, it, it, uh, it does. Cover a larger area, um, and extend for ten years, so that is, that's exciting to me, at least. Um, another, uh, piece, we are working with the, the TRP. Uh, to, and BLM on a, um, aquatic restoration programmatic EA. Uh, so hoping to see that start scoping in, in a month or two, um, so. It, it's been, right now, we're working through, um, the, kind of the scope of, of what that programmatic EA will entail. And again, if it being programmatic, it doesn't authorize site-specific, um, activities, those will be. Uh, those will be, those will have surveys and, um, and such as needed, uh, tearing off of that programmatic EA. But it'll, it'll, um, look at the, the sideboards and, of, of, uh, implementing. A decent amount of those programmatic activities, um, or, uh, like, uh, uh, fish passage. And, um, uh, reduced sediment and that kind of thing, so. Um, and then I also wanted to mention, since we're talking hiring, I just had a detailer start, uh, working. Out of the Supervisor's Office as a post-fire recovery, uh, program manager, so he'll be working with the, with the districts. And obviously, there's quite a bit of fire, um, impacts on the west side, so a lot of his time will be spent on the, on the west side. Um, uh, looking at those, those post-fire recovery needs, um, with, with the districts. So, we can get a little bit more, more organized and, and help see those things through, it's not a permanent position. But he will be with us for about four months. So, I think that's all I've got. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Kelly?
Kevin? I've got a question. Um, I've been doing good driving on two ninety-nine and most recently out to Heim Palm and up the Sixth Road and so I'm driving through, and through, uh, Corral Bottom. And I've seen a lot of, uh, areas of sand, the conifers that were burned in, uh, various fires. And I'm wondering, are you guys, uh, regenerating those stands or replanting in those stands? Are they just leaving them to do whatever they do?
Um, we are, we have not started, um, uh, uh, we have not scoped yet for reforestation, um, uh, CE, but we have talked about it and what that scope will be. Um, if it, if it's going to cover all of the, the recent wildfires or, um, well, it'll cover the recent wildfires, but, but what that scope will be, we haven't, um, ironed that out. We, we are planning on moving forward with reforestation. Um, Tara, do you have more to add to that?
Yeah, you asked the right person. You know, we all have our old hats we like to keep on. She's very passionate about it. Um, uh, so, yeah, we, we know that reforestation and we do have a CE category for that as well. And so that's part of, you know, back to the, the fuel break CE and the reforestation CE and finding where those fit in the rhythm of our work. Um, you know, the, and I'm, I'm very concerned to, to be really honest with you with the, the car delta footprint, because what we found in fire is that in the first, what, you know, before the first five years is o- over, when fire wildfire hits, uh, a fire footprint, it slows down. But after five years, that, that starts to change, especially as you get brush in there to go with the snags and the, and the fuel loading and all the dead trees. So, um, we've had some preliminary discussions about what that might look like on the forest to, to take on um, that fire footprint as well as the monument fire footprint, or whether we want to try and do one really, really big CE to cover, you know, west side reforestation or how we want to do that. So it's definitely my intent to get trees back in the ground and, and to, to be strategic about how we do it, right? We're not gonna, we're not gonna do it like we've always done it before. We're not gonna plant right out to the roads. Um, we're, we're gonna be strategic about where we put those trees in the ground and how we plant them. Um, given the, you know, the best opportunities for survival, knowing that, you know, it's, it's, uh, there's a lot of acres to cover. So it's, I, I really appreciate the question because it's, it's, we can do all the preventative work, but um, I don't want to end up, you know, kind of like the Mencino where you, they have so much reforestation to do, they, they, they haven't even, and that'll keep them busy forever. So I want to make sure we, we've got that work into, uh, the rhythm of our, um, planning efforts.
Yeah, I recall after the eight and seven fires, uh, there was a lot of work done to uh, salvage and reforest, and then there were areas that were not. And you've got all these snag falling down and brush coming up, and then there was a, uh, another wildfire in there and it was very hard to control.
And, yeah, and it's, and it's not safe for our firefighters to get in there. It's, there's a lot of, um, bad things that happen at that point. So we just need to be really strategic about the acres we pick.
And I just had one personal experience, and after the O eight fires, which not large, obviously, eight seven. Those complexes get through and we weren't able to salvage in that situation. So we find that it was the second largest reforestation that could send days. Trop fire specifically, we found in there in August complex. Started us all over. So if we don't remove those fuelable standing trees, we don't get rid of that, we don't deal with the brush, I said. Oh, it's, it's gonna come at a cost, which is certainly the need. And I think we have the support financially to do that. We just gotta figure out exactly how, when and where. Right now, it's plant source protection, roads, communities, want to get a handle on that, I think we can get a new forest station, but if we don't get rid of the fuel, we don't manage to do vegetation, like is, will lose the next fall. And that, that's, that's probably one to deal with.
We're hoping with the reforestation CE, you know, the, the site prep will include addressing those hazardous fuels. Um, so that will get us kind of a, a two for one. Um, is that a good way to put it, Kelly, or Todd? You know, if we have to.
It is, and, and right now is, is, is a good time, um, to be vying for those funds. Because, uh, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the Replant Act, but that, that, um, we are anticipating, um, substantially increasing the, our, our, our capacity for, our, our ability to, to fund those uh, site preparation and, and reforestation activities and, and follow-up manual release. That's key for a successful plantation.
Okay, well, thank you. I, I have no idea what was going on in that realm. Uh, thanks for the interview.
No problem.
Quick, to find out whether our partnership coordinator, Monique, you have anything to add to Forest Service kind of report?
Um, not too much to add on my end. Um, just that rack agreements out of, for the Trinity Rack, um, will be due on September thirtieth, on Friday, September thirtieth. Um, so if you have any, feel free to submit those to, um, the rack coordinator at RCD. So I can drop that email into this chat over here. Um, and then we have a meeting to see if that's a good deadline, um, on September nineteenth, but that's my only update for, for right now. Um, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so other item partner updates, uh, do we have, we have anything else that the Recreation Committee wants to bring to the full collaborative? Sarah, Carol, Kelly, and you kind of represent Kelly Jean, folks that might, might have anything else?
I don't want to be.
No, nothing else to add. Carol, anything from the recreation side?
Um, well, I think we're hoping that the Watershed Center gets the grant, um, from Sierra Nevada Conservancy to do the planning um, in the North Lake area so that a piece of that might help move forward the, um, trail around the lake. Um, Bowerman, we talked about, uh, we're gonna be submitting a, uh, proposal to the Rack to repair the foundation at the barn. Um, and I can't think of anything else that was that, um, newsworthy.
Okay. Kelly, anything else? No? Okay. So RCD update.
Hey, Chris, would you like to talk a little bit about what our crews are up to?
Yeah, I can give a brief update on our, uh, Forest Health crews. So we, we currently have four crews on staff and we're looking to backfill a few positions just from kind of standard turnover stuff. And they recently moved onto the, the Mad River Ranger District. And so they're working out there and the plan is to have those two crews working out there essentially until the snow flies. As long, uh, as long a season as we can get out there, mostly doing like roadside clearance and getting some of the, the higher branches for uh, larger vehicles and engine and things like that. And then our other crew is, we've been working on BLM land within the WCF up on Democrat Ridge. Just working in the, the roadside, that's a part of a larger project, but what's, uh, currently under, uh, covered under compliance is the, the fifty-foot kind of each side of the road along Democrat Gulch Road, which is that prominent ridge line outside of Weaverville. So we're continuing to, to chip away at that. And then we've also got some private land work, kind of on the, on top of Brown's Mountain, and that's part of something we'll probably apply for future funding for that might, might tie into the, the Musser Forest Service work. That would essentially be a fuel break that would wrap the entire town on, on that, that portion, but that's a, a project that's just in the, in the works, but we're doing a, a small portion of it on some private land up there. And then we've been working some with the Forest Service just to, to build our more technical forestry crew up. But that, uh, that agreement's kind of held up currently in grants and agreements, but that's something else that we're looking forward to and, and working on. And then we're also just kind of doing some prep with some of our partners, the Forest Service and BLM for planning the, the fall season and hopefully as, as the rain comes, there'll be lots of prescribed fire and there's definitely tons of piles that we're gonna, the RCD is planning on assisting with any way we can in, uh, providing personnel. So I think that's, that's pretty much it for the, the Forest Health side unless people have questions.
Carol, you have your hand up.
So Chris, do you have any idea when they would come back up and finish the Guy Covington project?
Yeah, the, uh, some of it, we've been, the, the weather's kind of shifted basically this last week.
Sorry, you're really muted.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, so the weather has kind of shifted, so we pulled off that project just because we're, uh, the project activity levels were shutting us down really early and it was just, we want to work full day. And so I would, we should be up there probably in the next two or three weeks. I think that project's priority and we wanna, we wanna get on that as soon as we can. We're just waiting until the, the weather's in agreement, so we don't have to shut down early and it, that's kind of seems to be the trend currently, so I, the best estimate would be probably like mid to early October.
And do you still think you can do the SPI chunk as part of, um, that other grant?
Yeah, I think we'll, when we start back up out there, we'll, we should be able to do that SPI piece. That's probably more critical than some of that other stuff to get done this season.
Right, right along the road. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Kelly, anything else? Uh, yeah, definitely. Um, I wanted to report out that, uh, we've been, the Trinity Fire Safety Council and the RCD specifically have been working with the Willow Creek, uh, Fire Safety Council. Fair bit, um, we also have an agreement now and then we'll, we'll, we'll work with the Watershed Center on doing some um, you know, support services down in the greater Willow Creek, um, Fire Safety Council area, which must spill over into Hubble County as well as this, uh, to their C flat on the, on the Trinity side. Um, so we'll be, um, actively taking on some more, um, I guess. Taking on, uh, some private land issues that have been, you know, the result of last year's snow down and now, you know, having some with um, the lighting complex and kind of the issue that we were running into a morning with last year, so it's gonna be, um, that's a, an actual project that we have with Hubble County with CalFire funds. And, um, so we're, we'll be working with Watershed Center, um, to, to help support that, those, these, uh, those recovery efforts. Um, we're also working, uh, with the North Post Re, uh, Resource Conservation District Collaborative, which is a collaborative of eleven, um, North Hill, uh, districts, RCDs. Uh, working with the North Post Pre-Source Partnership, um, on help providing the technical su- support, particularly in their planning efforts with regards to, for, uh, related work. So, um, and then the other thing that I wanted to mention was that, um, well, we're starting to run issues with the county's lack, uh, um, hazard mitigation plan, which has now expired. We did the, we actually did, um, the work for that and published that in two thousand sixteen, and that expired five years last year. Their county's currently trying to get, uh, temporary one completed, but we're running into issues, uh, doing applications for things like CalOES and FEMA Olympic and things like that. Um, because of the fact that we don't have a hazard mitigation plan in the county uh, that's active. And so, um, we have funding within one of our, uh, CalFire grants to do a full update, um, of the county is kind of try to figure out exactly how to deal with that, and they're trying to get like a sort of temporary, um, uh, temporary hazard mitigation plan in place to work in the state. Yeah, so I, I don't know exactly what the structure of it is, but it has to be like filed with basically the state and with the feds, like, in order for it to be, and it has to be accepted by FEMA basically before it actually be after. That has, uh, been problematic for us as we're seeking certain types of funding. The foundation, uh, had mentioned, uh, the one agreement that we had submitted last year while it was actually in place. That was moving through, but, um, the foundation is, you know, approached us again, so, you know, we've got this other funding opportunity. We'd like to partner with the feds. And, you know, we'd start throwing out some ideas, but because we're in that between time now, we can't really take advantage of current funding cycle. Which is kind of a bummer because, um, you know, they're, they're pretty fantastic to work with as far as that's concerned. They pretty much handle all of the expenses that it, it takes to see one of those projects all the way from like inception to, you know, post, post in, um, uh, implementation. So I just wanted to point out that, um, this is something that's actually becoming a problem for us, uh, with regard to bringing more money into the county. So, uh, I'm not necessarily recommending that we have any kind of specific action with regard to this, but it's something I think that you should all be aware of, and if you do have that issue, um, and may be bringing, you know, something to the, um, cloud there in order to maybe get some support. And sort of push this issue with the board supervisors so that they can kind of begin to prioritize, uh, you know, staff. So is it, is it, if you're, you're mostly still working as staff, as staff, well, yeah. Yeah, we're, we're in directly with Mike Cottone, who's been, um, acting, um, uh, department manager for the, for the LBS department. Uh, and they're, and they're doing their best, uh, to actually get something going, but it's, it's taking them, it's taking longer than we.
Yeah, I would think the county itself is losing funding opportunities because of this too. I can imagine this. What does that mean, uh, they're doing their best?
They're actively, for the best of my knowledge, they're actively working on getting this, this stock app made. I haven't actually, we haven't, we haven't gone above the mic's head in regard to this, so we haven't really approached letting directly, but, um, that was probably gonna be one of our next steps depending on how things transpire.
So we all make the most.
Um, yeah, you know, it wouldn't hurt.
I would think a strategy, a simple strategy might very well be for supervisors always against the Fire Safety Council meeting.
That's right.
Having an agenda for the Fire Safety Council meeting next week, that would be a good idea. So I'll probably say. And I give those supervisors a hint of some, it's gonna be, yeah, just new quotes.
Right, yeah, I, I can get a whole bill and, uh, I can get a lot to. Yeah, that, that, that would probably be, you know, I can, some attention for that. But it's, it's a pretty significant, it's now a pretty big problem for, where we couldn't take advantage of certain public meetings are not available to us because of that lack for that one. So, um, uh, I think that is.
Okay, great. Okay, so any questions for Kelly or Chris? If not, move on to the Watershed Center. Is Randy still on? Oh, Nick has joined us also, okay.
Yeah, I had a little technical glitch, so I'm back, but I, I did also see that Nick was on. Oh, that's me. Uh, sorry about that. Scheduled a meeting using his login and now they're probably ascribing that to me, so.
You need to stick around a little longer before you do that. Go ahead, Ray.
Um, so, yeah, uh, it's a busy time of year. Um, I think in a lot of ways, you got, all have been hearing about the work that we've been up to with the updates from the two forests um, and the RCD. Um, we are, our, uh, fuels crews are also working on the Mad River. Um, Ranger District, I think because we both have expiring master agreements with the Six Rivers. So we have money encumbered in those agreements. We would really like to see good work done on the ground. Um, so we're, LaJoan already went into some of the fuel break work that we're doing and we're supporting the effort, um, with the air curtain burner. Um, and so, uh, we have some private. Um, and so uh we have some private lands treatments that we're doing um with NRCS leveraging some of the grant funding um that we've been getting around Weaverville and on the South Fork of the Trinity. Um, and then uh we really kinda dug in to the neighborhood along Deerlick Springs, um, and that's part of the prevention grant that the RCD um got a year or two ago, I think it was just a year ago. Um, and so making good progress out there. Um, it's always uh exciting to see how people get interested in getting work done on their ground as they see the work happening. Um, and in the interest of continuing on with the work that we've been doing, we're uh putting together a proposal for the new Forest Service Grant Program called the Community Wildfire Defense Grant, and it will probably extend all the work that's happening um that the RCD and the Watershed Center are doing um around Junction City, Weaverville and Douglas City. Um, but, you know, we're a little bit uncertain, it's a new grant program. Uh, so we'll see how that goes and we'll certainly keep everybody posted um on the uh progress. Um, we are, have been awarded the funding for the SNC grant up in the Upper Watershed. I think you all know that the Josh Smith and the Watershed side of the house are working on uh Bureau of Reclamation's Smart Water um grant, looking at roads and um watershed function up there and working through the Watershed Council. And so this SNC proposal complements that, but from a vegetation standpoint, and will be um having the land tender software set up for county in collaboration with the Forest Service. Um, and so we're excited, it's all happening now. Um, we're thinking that land tender will be up and running early in twenty twenty-three and and ready to start kind of that discussion of uh some of the potential project areas that are on people's minds up there. Um, and hopefully land tender will support um the discussion with some good information. Uh, yeah, I can't really think of anything else that somebody else hasn't talked about, but if anybody has questions, um, please feel free to ask me whatever you might be interested in.
Any questions for Randy? No, Kelly, it looks like there's a a chat message from Monique.
Yeah, it said, if anyone has a treaty rack proposal to submit, please send those to rack underscore coordinator at tcrc.net, like Fridays, September thirtieth.
Okay. Okay, so if nothing else for Randy, do we have other activity or committees that need to report out? None, none that I can think of, though. I don't think there's been much other activity. Okay, so we're way ahead of schedule, uh, under budget.
That's a win.
So we've got, anybody from the public or just any members that have any, anything they wanna bring up that hasn't been that wasn't on the agenda and talked about today? Yeah, going, going, gone. People like to get out and go to this football weather. Uh, let's skip facilitation team for the moment and do October field trip plan.
Sure. Um, so I think that the plan is to go out to uh that Burnt Ranch, uh Big Bar, Hyam Palm, Crowe Bottom, pick another name, Peace, uh as well as Hennessy Ridge. Um, so that, that was the plan. Uh, I had gone out there uh previous to uh our last scheduled field trip and and uh get gotten some GPS points for some potential stops. Um, so I'll, I'll just kinda run through some of the things that I thought we could look at, and then I'm curious about um anyways, I'll ask you some questions of that. So we have a stop that would look at uh like an oak woodlands prescription. Um, and we had a stop that would look at uh clearly fuel breaks along some of those main roads, especially the paved ones. Um, working at, working at getting those roads repaired, by the way. Um, look at some wildlife-centric prescriptions, because I know we, that's like owl center, uh center, uh, then we have a lot of owls there. Uh, also look at some general forest health prescription possibilities. Uh, I want to, um I wanna look at some riparian areas where we don't have um significant amounts of slope and talk about that inner gorge, outer gorge type of treatment, because both the um members of the collaborative uh and and the Forest Service have been frustrated at times with our inability to treat the riparian areas, especially where we know we could get in and get out and and not, not hurt anything and actually benefit it. So I wanted to try to find some of those locations where we could have those discussions. Maybe get some of those regulatory agencies out there to to look at those things again. Um, also, obviously, community protection uh and uh link to critical egress and ingress. We know that those, those road systems back there are critical to Hyam Palm, that's how they get would get out during an emergency, get them out to two ninety-nine. Um, look at some plantations and and ways that we wanna manage the plantations, because we have a a plenty of them out there. Uh, potential to also do some meadow enhancement, there's a few meadows up there, we could look at some of that stuff. Won't get all this in a day, I've, I've tended worn out. I, I worn out some groups in my day. I could be that, uh, deputy regional forester recently. Um, and then also, um, wanted to let the group know I'm looking to uh in in conversations with uh that the Shasta Trinity leadership has had with the Six Rivers leadership, um, we've been directed to make sure that we're looking at things on more of a landscape basis and not just thinking the world ends at the end of our border. So for instance, for that project down there, it makes a lot of sense to get out Hennessy Ridge and behind Salier um in this project and include that. Um, and uh I'm fortunate and unfortunately, I'm losing one of my foresters back to the Six Rivers, but I'm gonna keep him engaged on both ends, so um, those are kind of the, some of the general things we wanna talk about. Um, for these types of meetings, um, I've wanted to really look at different, um, look way on the front end, like what are we looking for for a healthy forest? What does the shaded fuel break look like? Where's a good place to do this? I wanna, I wanna look at both, um, you know, I don't, I don't wanna come out of this with a specific prescription, I just wanna get an idea of what the collaborative's looking at. Um, and make sure, see where we have alignment on what we think needs to happen on the landscape to get to that healthy forest. We had some really good discussions out, and we went up north on that field trip and just looked at some stands and said, hey, what, what do we think this should look like? What are the problems here? How can we treat it? And I'm looking forward to doing a lot of that front-end collaboration to help us um then decide kind of where to go and what treatments we're looking to do there. Uh, that's kind of what I'm hoping for the field trip. Now, I will tell you, um, I had asked Todd to come over as well, even though I know it's not on his unit, and I even uh let, asked Sarah. Uh, and I asked, I've asked Kelly McElroy to come over and go on um on this field trip as well. So I don't wanna, but I don't, one thing I've liked about our field trips lately is I like when the um the collaborative is also helping drive the stops, and I, I don't think that the collaborative has enjoyed. Uh, you know, here's, here's a project that we're going to do. Um, we'd like you to come out and bless it, and we're gonna take you from stop to stop, 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 and you know, you don't even get to stop, look anything in between. So this is not like that, this is way on the front end, and if there's stops, I'm gonna get kind of our proposed stops to Kelly. We've talked about that, I have them GPS and some of the talking points, um, Logan made me a map. And we'll share that with Kelly, and if you, if the collaborative wants to add other stops or or take stops out, I want it to be our field trip, not my field trip dragging you around in the woods.
So uh, there's a document, a particular, Kenneth prepared a bunch of years ago, which was a fire management plan for the Burnt Ranch area. Yeah, down my, well, one of the urban plans was down river, down, started a great fall, but went down to a little creek on the, on the north side of the river and then went down South Fork Road to the end of that is on, pretty sure it's on the Goshen People website, yeah, it would be something might help important discussion.
Yeah.
We should know, we should know. Yeah, that'd be good. Uh, and the field trip date is October twenty-first. Yeah, okay.
So.
We'll figure out all the specifics of where we meet and all that.
Yeah, are, are, are you guys comfortable, and this is a group, a question for the whole group, are you comfortable with a, you know, a, a pretty broad force, so this is a meeting, it would be good to get uh like Christine Jordan too and um as well as our wildlife biologists, uh to have a number of foresters at it um and our fuels specialists, but I don't wanna, you know, it's such a good conversation to have, but I don't wanna overwhelm the collaborative by having an army of uh Forest Service employees there, so what, what are your thoughts along those lines? What, what kind of, what kind of field trip is the group looking for?
Any thoughts from the group?
Well, it's not an army.
Well, just just uh the different possibilities and the, in the uh I think it's an important area to look at from Hyam Palm to Burnt Ranch to down to Big Bar. I'm wondering about the Hyam Palm Fire Safe Council, if they shouldn't be involved in at least uh getting out of Hay Fork Valley up to the summit sixteen road, what their ideas are. And uh, anyway, I think it's too much for us to look at all of that in one trip, but let's look at different uh different situations and see what we are in agreement on, but uh I think it's a, I think it's a good priority for us, because Burnt Ranch especially, I think is in grave danger from wildfire coming at them from down it to highway. So anyway, I look forward to going on the field trip, whatever you plan.
So Tara, how about, um, since you have points kind of in your head, how about emailing those out and letting anyone who's going on the trip kind of prioritize and take from there. For definitely what you listed is way more than one trip.
Yeah, no, I've got, I only have about, I think I've only picked out five stops, I think maybe six, but I'll, I'll send what I have and a spatial reference to Kelly, and I'll have him get it out to you guys, and then you guys can let me know what your priorities are. Um, I was especially, um uh, you know, put a plug in for that oak woodlands treatment, just because I think if you go out there, you can just see the pine is stressed, short needles, not looking good. It's a great place to put prescribed fire back in the landscape, so I thought that would be, and it's right off the, most of the stops I picked, um, were, were really close to making them in roads, but um, yeah, I'll get that out to you. Um yeah, you have to watch me, because I'll give us a field trip that, you know, you need a day to recover from if you, if you give me half a chance.
Well, that's why they're on fires.
Yeah.
Okay, any, anything else on the field trip plan? No? Uh, agenda building for our next, our next meeting and our last meeting for two thousand twenty-two is uh November eighteenth. So are there particular things that we want to have on the agenda?
No, on the last agenda, it was illegal growth, and it didn't give you a, it didn't give you a question.
Okay.
Have you seen that going down, all the law enforcement, it sounds like he has more time now, because he's not chasing as much of that around. Are you guys seeing a lot less of that?
No.
Can't tell.
I heard you.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if the, the next meeting, we're gonna do this hybrid uh business again, uh, we need to invest in some more microphones, because basically through this whole meeting, I could hear Tara and Pat Frost. Uh, and that was about it. Everybody else sound like they're at the bottom of a well, it's really difficult to be an active participant in a meeting when you can't really hear folks.
Mike Dixon, Mike Dixon from uh the Trinity River Restoration Program has volunteered their conference room space, and he said that their their system is, is pretty small, so, uh, and I think it's bigger, uh, you know, in, in whole world people, so uh they might take him up on.
Maybe you do a test meeting.
Yeah, like, we almost just can see it work better. We can do it, um he said that ten people sit around the table and then there's a lot more space, and he said that even the space that's for behind the table, the, the, the mics work good, so we can do that for the rec committee meeting the, the week before.
Oh, yeah.
Or two weeks before, actually.
Right.
But there's a holiday.
Yeah.
So we can test it that, that.
Okay. Okay, cool. Any other agenda items?
I do.
Yeah.
Um, so a substitution for our field trips through the winter. Like, we, we talked in the field about maybe that would be a good time to get maps out and look at them on, you know, and look at projects and bigger planning efforts.
Yeah.
So some kind of, so we don't lose that.
Calling me back.
No problem, how you doing?
I'm doing pretty good, I, I just uh
Larry's doing pretty good. Um, so I thought that, that might be a good thing.
Good idea. Anybody, anything else?
Well, that would be, I mean, the next schedule would be December sixteen.
Right.
If we're following.
Follow the pat, that pattern. So I have recognized kind of holiday schedules and stuff like that, could be January before we do it again. Okay. Okay, okay. Anything, any other agenda related items? Okay, facilitation team, do you have anything, Kelly?
I, you heard. So I do. So uh
I'm gonna quit doing this to end of two thousand twenty-two. So the November meeting and potentially December are gonna be the last of my facilitating uh
What's this, what's this, what are you talking about? Because I, you're, I work with you on many, many things.
You'd be in the collaborative facilitator.
Okay.
All right, it's just time for me to focus on some other things.
Dang.
So put your thinking caps on, we need somebody to replace me. Your, your replacement.
I was, uh, you beat me to it.
Put it on the agenda. Put it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, gonna get that last bit out of you, hate that, fucking agenda.
I'm in person this afternoon.
Anyway, that, that, that's it. Does anybody have anything else? Well, Donna had a schedule. Such a good decision.
Thanks, everyone.
Everyone, thank you, Pat.
Thank you. Thanks to you.
Arnold, see you Monday again.
Have a nice weekend.
Yeah. Cause we, we analyze, I think seven or besides. Yeah, right, what is four acts correlation, who pants what's on the trees, current one on today. Probably not, because the stream is a border, we're not even doing it, it's you know, the college foundation for two thousand and, and leaving, we didn't respond to that.
You're swimming.